For North Babylon Planning Board of Education Budget Hearing and you also have a presentable agenda. Let's go over with the presentation of the budget.
Yep, so I'm going to ask Mr. Bharti to present the final budget that is going up for vote over from today on 17. This is our official budget hearing that we're required to do by law. It will give a summary of our budget and tax rates for the district. You could like that, Dan.
You're good, Dan. Yeah, you're good. Alright, thank you, everyone. So today's budget presentation is a budget hearing. So it's our last meeting before the budget vote on Tuesday. So today's more of a recap of what we've done. And also, I've broken out the three-part budget in a little more detail. So I'll go through that as well. So the first slide here, you can see it's a summary slide that I showed at all the presentations. So starting from the bottom up, total revenue and financial resources. For the proposed budget, it's 129,748,302. So that's a 3.98% increase. So that's multiple things. So it's the total revenue and financial resources. That's also when we talk about our expenditure budget, that's the same number. And when they talk about your total budget. So that's all the same exact number, 3.98%. And that's made up of two things, it's the revenue and the resources. So our financial resources is our savings. And you can see, we're proposing to use 3.382 million dollars. And that's less than last year. So last year's budget this current fiscal year is 3.7. So that represents about an 8% decrease. And then the next section, if you look up at the top, it's 126,365,706 dollars. That's the total revenue that we're expecting for '22, '23. And that represents a 4.36% increase. And the two biggest categories there, it's state aid and property taxes. So we were very fortunate, this year, our state aid is projected to go up about 7.5%. And our tax levy that we're proposing is 2.37%. And that's the maximum now under the tax gap. So the next slide here, you'll see is a breakdown of our state aid. So I compared it both to last year, so this current fiscal year, and also the executive original budget proposal. So you can see there's three sections. So the first one's comparing it to what we originally proposed in February. So we had originally thought that our state aid would be 53.791 million. We're now projecting that it's going to be 54,284,188. So that increase came in the legislative budget. And that represents a total increase from what we originally proposed, of 492,404 dollars. That's what we discussed at the last budget meeting. And how that compares to what our '21, '22 state aid. You can see, it's the second line, the one that's in blue. It's about a 3.761 million increase. So that's the 7.5% I referenced earlier. And also, it's important to note that we're also getting additional UPK money. So that is an additional 337,144. So that, you can see, it goes from, originally, we thought it was going to be just under $700,000. And now we're projecting just over a million dollars. Okay, so the next couple of slides are the three-part budget. So this here is a pie chart, just to show visually. You'll see, if anyone's, you should be receiving in the community, a budget newsletter and a six-day notice that shows the three-part budget. These are the same numbers. So you see, the largest part of our expenditures go to our program budget, which is about 77%. That's all instructional, extracurricular, our transportation's in there as well. And then the next biggest chunk of our budget is the capital budget. So that's primarily facilities, and that's about 14% to 15%. And then you see, the administrative budget is just under 9%. That's central office, business office, district clerk, activities like that. So I'm going to walk through kind of the three categories now. So administrative budget, you see, it's, like I said, 9%. All categories really have stayed stable year to year. So there were all less than 1% difference when looking at the percent of the total budget from last year. The administrative budget, there's a lot of lines there. But the biggest area where the cost really drives, so it's about $200,000 increase year to year. And it's pretty much all in the employee benefits line. So our, all the employee benefits for the district, they get allocated out to the different categories. And that's really what's driving that cost. Next is the program budget. Like I said, it's within 1%, 77% of our expenses. And the two key categories here are, again, employee benefits, it's the same thing. And the other big area which we've talked about already is the contract transportation. So those two lines really make up the total increase from the 96 million to the 99 million. Okay, and lastly is the capital budget. Same thing here, we have two key lines that are kind of driving the expenses. One, again, it's the same thing, employee benefits. And then the other one, which we've also talked about in previous presentations, is the debt service. So you see, it goes from 5 million to 6 million. And it's just important to keep in mind that we're also getting, a part of that increase in state aid we're getting is because of the capital, because of the bond. So a lot of that, we see the increased expense, but we're also getting increased revenue and state aid for it. So, but that kind of are the two key categories. If you're looking, why is it going from 17.4 to 18.9? That's the reason why, it's really those two lines there. But overall, we're still at around 14% of our total budget is capital. Last slide I have here is tax rate impact to the average homeowner. So you can see, I put a few years here on the slide, but the '22, '23 proposed year, the school tax levy, it's 70,644,518. And that, in dollar terms, is about $1.6 million. And that's the 2.37% tax levy increase that I spoke about. And when you look at the assessed value of the property in the district, it's roughly 32 million, just over. That's the 32,776,067. And then if you follow down the chart, you'll see the tax rate per 100 of assessed value is approximately $215. So if you use an average assessment of 3,700, that would put you an average tax impact of just under $8,000. So it's 7,975. And that represents a $185 increase. And again, that percentage is going to stay the same because it's all based off of the tax levy of 2.37%. And that's the last slide I had. So again, the reminder that the budget vote is Tuesday, May 17th, and please come out to vote. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, I have one real quick. I'm sure I have been asked this before, but the bus drivers' salaries. You know, we talked about wanting the bus drivers back from the transportation contracts we have.
Yep.
And we want to increase their salaries. Is that budgeted in this budget somehow, the salary increase? Do I have to be there?
Um, so there's not, the, what's budgeted is on transportation. It's the salary, it's like step increases that would normally occur in a current contract. But there's no, there's not budgeted for like anything that hasn't been negotiated or anything like that. But we do have money that's set aside for contract transportation. So there's allowances in contract transportation for what may or may not come next year.
I have a question regarding security, the increase in security.
The increases in...
First, for other security, was that on, oh, I'm sorry, the capital budget?
On the capital budget? Okay.
It's increased positions that we added. We added positions this year, remember, due to our plan, behavioral plan. So there's additional positions that were requested. So it would be salary increases and additional positions.
Yeah, and there's also a small, there's a little bit of, with the new ID cards and things like that, we purchased additional ID cards, a new system, so that's all in there as well.
Also, as we add additional teams and clubs, so yeah, the unified basketball team, you need security at those games and events. So the amount of after-school time, we have co-curricular security presence is needed. So that's all factored in there.
Yeah, no problem.
Anyone else?
Do you have a question?
Board, any other questions? I don't know if I can open up this podium to you.
You want me to close it?
Alright, this time we'll take some questions from the audience. Please come up to the mic. Dorie, and Steven, and address, and we can do five each, right?
Just maybe, alright. Ellen here, the 17th Avenue. I was wondering, what did your revenue go down?
The local revenue. Revenue, there was a small increase in the local revenue. Local revenue went down, total revenue did not. So local revenue, we previously, it budgeted more in line with what we expected to get, so that's going to fluctuate year to year. But there's two, one big area is, there used to be, we changed kind of the way the year-end processing works, where we used to get a lot of, what's called like a refund of higher expense, where things were, we would get a, it's more of an accounting entry than anything else, where the money would be ripped off and then regrouped in the following year. But the amount of money that went down is more in line with kind of what we're expecting to get. So there's no really, I mean, the main sources are all still there. So the use of the rental property, we got, that revenue's still the same. We had, you know, use of facilities is roughly the same. So that, that's the reason why, it's more of an accounting entry than anything else.
I just wondered, alright. I understand when we vote, we vote on the bottom line. Even though things have been presented, where the money's going, ultimately, we vote on the bottom line. My concern as a taxpayer is at the last meeting, you talked about making changes, and I can't remember the specifics, but adding money to something and taking it from somewhere else, which you're allowed to do. But as a person who comes to all of these meetings and listens to where all the money goes, I have real concerns about you already talking about making changes to how you're appropriating certain things. And it's not the first year it happens, but as a taxpayer, I listen to everything you say. And I have concerns that you might make changes to different programs after we vote.
Hi, Karen Schmidt, 159 Woodyard Avenue. I didn't catch the numbers for the current year to the next year for contract transportation. Can you just get those numbers for me?
So for '22, '23, it's 3.7 million dollars, '21, '22, it's 2.1.
So it's increased 1.6 million?
Right.
Okay.
Yep.
Now, is this segment just for budget-based questions? Will there be an opportunity for the rest of the agenda? Awesome, thank you.
Well, the questions will move on to the agenda. So the first topic is, was the elementary school runs. There were some questions, concerns about that. We presented for that, so we'll have some questions.
I have some questions regarding how the decision was made for specific schools at specific times. I was just wondering what the conversation and the decision was in finalizing that.
So nothing's been finalized. I sent the Board of Education a notice of recommended elementary school start times. The decision was made by Parham and Place and William and DeLuca have to be together in order for us to complete less than appropriate. So those two are paired. Given that they're paired, and looking at the 117 kids that will be going to UPK, we had to determine a start and end time for UPK that would allow parents the opportunity to drop off their children at UPK and still have an opportunity to get their other children, should they have school-aged children, to their school buildings or back home to receive transportation to another building. So with the start, that would make Parham and DeLuca the later schools, so that at MGV, the UPK program would be starting at 8:30 in the morning for UPK students, with K through 5 students starting at 8:55. And it allows that building to be appropriately supervised by the building principal because of having the early UPK and the earlier start time and her work hours for the day. And Parham and DeLuca needing to be together. So if you have a UPK student, drop-off would start somewhere between 8:20 or 8:15, 8:20 for drop-off. And then schools that start at 8:55, which would be better Woods and Belmont, parents could drop off their UPK child and then still get their other children to those schools. And then if you were a Parham and Place or a DeLuca parent, you could get home and your child could still have time to get to the bus stop to take a bus to their school.
Glenn, the, when you said that it was information provided to us, do you mean the information that we just got now?
No, it was given to, in a board update.
Did you reference one?
Sure.
Because I have to tell you, it's the first time that I'm seeing this. And I guess my question is, being that it's the first time that I'm seeing it, is it, is there a reason where it's hard and fast that we have to stay to the times for MGV and Parham and Place, I'm sorry, MGV, Woods, Belmont, and Parham and Place, William and DeLuca? Why does that have to have an earlier start? I'm just not clear. In other words, couldn't the UPK start later? And the other three schools? And Parham and DeLuca that were affected last year by the late start? Couldn't there be a flip-flop?
We're discussing it with the elementary principals and having this conversation, and with Al and with Frank. And the start and end time for UPK, the 8:30 to 2:30, getting those students in and having drop-off because they were going to be using two aspects. If you moved better later and you had UPK later, the start and end time for the workday would be influenced by that. As long as Parham and Place and DeLuca stay together, if the board wants to change, whatever you want to recommend, you tell me what you want, and I'll do it. My recommendation is in the notice that I gave you.
Why do they have to stay together?
Because of the amount of buses we have available to us and the routing.
What, did transportation do like a workup?
They did.
And provide that, is it possible to provide that to the board to take a look at?
I don't have that available to me now.
Well, yeah, obviously.
Al did the routing, and he did the work with Frank and provided Frank that information and figured out how many runs there were in each of the schools, told us which schools should be combined for routing purposes.
It's business size of the schools.
Sure, but if you can't just share that information with the board, that'd be great because I feel like we're walking in blind, not having a previous conversation, just knowing that to save a significant amount of money, we were going to have to perhaps do staggered times.
I understand, this isn't blind, we weren't speaking about a staggered start time since the budget presentations.
Right, you mentioned that it would be beneficial to have a staggered start time. However, there was no discussion about which schools would be affected. Again, we still haven't been told, but I, and I'm not sure, but parents and teachers had reached out to me saying that it had already been done, that letters had been sent home.
That's not, I don't know of any letters that were sent home because nobody has been told that this was finalized until the board discussion that was going to occur on May 17.
I spoke to Al, I spoke to Al this morning, and he was asking me if final decision had been made. And I told him, no, I said it was on the agenda to talk tonight.
And all five building principals, they know that no decision was made until a board discussion.
Is there?
Oh, sure.
So do you have a copy of that letter that you can provide me, whether that went home, say that?
No, it was just, it was just word of mouth.
Oh, because you said a letter went home.
Right, I was told by someone that a letter went home. I didn't see it, it wasn't provided to me.
Can you get that from the person?
I'm sorry?
Can you get that from the person and provide it to me?
I can certainly ask them, but they are a staff member, and I wouldn't want to...
You don't have to tell me who it is. You don't have to tell me who it is.
Sure.
Frank, can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
Do you know, how many students does Parham have? How many, I'm sorry, how many buses does Parham go with on you?
I don't, I can log that, I don't know if the top line has the numbers.
Can you just give me the comparison between the two sets of schools?
Yes, yeah, so what I'll get, so what Al came up with, it's basically like, what it goes, it's schematic. It shows like each school, when they're dropping off, picking up the number of buses. So it's like every single driver that we have basically gets like routed and kind of like a number of drivers on one column, and all the routes that they have to do. So it shows all the needs by building. So I can get that for you, and I'll look for it right now.
Also, is there, like, this is the best of stone yet. Is there other alternatives that we could be presented with, different scenarios? You know, we're getting hit almost from people, we got stuck last year. And many people are kind of like, why aren't you rotating? Can there be a rotating schedule, six months or half a year, half a year the other way? Are these things just being worked out, different, you know, like different options? You know, many people are right, you know, they, wise in their turn, you know, some wise are to switch to another school. We gave over the scenarios, but could there be other options that we could discuss on that?
Yes, absolutely. So the routing doesn't take place yet or anything like that. We're just trying to plan to get ahead. When we start to think, we start typically, it's, we don't, there's not such a change like this. Like typically, we're not doing like something this big, but that, but we've started, Al and I have been talking about this for a few months. So we've been starting to plan and see the best way to optimize with the least disruption to try to, just in the base of the rising contract transportation cost, try to mitigate that with the least disruption to people. So this is just a suggestion. But yeah, we can absolutely change every aspect of it, there's not a single thing in there that...
There's a couple of different scenarios that we could go off of there.
I'm not sure how the rest of the board feels, but I mean, I think we do think it should be equitable. There were parents and teachers that, you know, their lives were disrupted last year in those two schools. And to have to do that again just does not seem fair.
I just want to inform you that it's 25 minutes. That's the difference of the start times.
Right, again, I don't have elementary students, but I know when I had my three kids in DeLuca, it was a challenge to get them to their sports, to get them to religion, to find someone to drop them off in the morning because I leave for work a little bit before then. So, you know, I know it's only 25 minutes, but particularly for, you know, for working parents or parents that have multiple children, it's a hardship. So we can have the discussion.
Yeah, I'll send that, I have a lot of different drafts here for now, so I just want to make sure I get the right one, and I'll have that sent out.
Thank you.
Also, a complaint that I got from two parents about the afternoon shift, when the people come home, the kids come home at 3:45, they have baseball, they have religion, and they're hit with so much homework that their teachers have to be compensated for that also. I know we were here for education, but puts a strain on the parents also out there. Soccer games, where's the rush, I'll get homework done, or get the soccer first and come back with the homework. It's really a mishmash for them, so we just, you know, we have to keep that in mind.
Thank you, Frank. Number two is high school prom. I think there was a couple of questions about that.
If I had one right away, I'll have several. I don't want to put you on the spot, but can you come up and just let us know what's going on? You must hear all the rumors that are going out there, what we're not doing and what we are doing. Can we put a lot of that to rest tonight? Am I allowed to do that, to ask what's going on? Dr. Clomp, do you mind?
We don't, we can ask, we can ask him a few questions, I'm sure, but we can't have him back to normal, it's not a session.
Well, no, yeah, well, I'm sure he knows, he's got complaints. I can bring something up, like, are we having senior day? The prom, is that going to be the same, or what's going on?
We're having a prom.
Back to normal, this is like, we're back to...
Chatel amir, yeah, scheduled a year in advance, yeah.
And then junior prom, we have a junior prom?
We're having a junior banquet, we've called it a junior banquet for like seven or eight years. We used to be in the cafeteria, we started doing it.
I know, I'm not grilling you, but these nurses that are out there that we're getting grilled off.
How am I doing?
You're doing great.
I'm killing it, right?
We're just running out of room, it's the rest, that's just fine, that's very good. Senior day, are they going to have the barbecue, is he going to barbecue?
That's the plan, actually, I don't know if we're doing a barbecue or if we're doing something else, but yeah, it'll be...
Very good, thank you very much. Class picture, big thing, or one big class?
I think that might have been done even in the fall.
Very good.
Could be wrong.
I just want to make sure people hear that and know that because...
We tried to resume, I think the answer to your question...
We want to go back to normal, basically.
I think we've been trying to revert back to, back to normal. And I think we've done a pretty good job, obviously, the construction and the auditorium makes that a little bit difficult. Many of you have been at a lot of our ceremonies here, due to COVID, we broke up a lot of ceremonies that were otherwise combined. But we're trying to revert to normal.
And the last one, the meet and person, for the meet and greet for the parents and the kids having the prom, the meeting that you had where the kids take the oath, I know right now...
Okay, so we used to have a, we always did a pre-prom, when I started here, we started a pre-prom decision-making meeting. And it was contingent upon a child's ability to show up with their parents prior to the purchase of prom tickets. This year, we recorded, we recorded a video, we put it together in an EdPuzzle. The kids answer some questions, it's private, goes to the class advisors. They upload the answers to those questions, they upload a video of themselves reciting the prom promise, which is ostensibly about maintaining lines of communication between parents and kids over, really, the end of the year, but specifically with regard to the prom. Somebody were drinking, cover things like the social host law. In years past, we'd also brought in speakers, sometimes some were better than others, some liked to go way longer than we needed, like the sheriff's office. But that's what we did this year, we made it virtual, interactive, using the kids' Google accounts. And the senior class has a Google classroom, which was the seventh.
Have you been getting many complaints on that?
I think I had three, and I tried calling all three parents back. One parent, one parent did not return rainbow marches phone calls, phone calls...
No, that's fine, and just, like, some parents come to me and just say, well, this is our first kid going to prom, we're nervous, we'd like to ask you a question, so you're open for other people to call?
Yeah, just in the past, yeah, in the past, if a parent or student couldn't attend the pre-prom decision-making because a parent was working, we sit up in the middle of the time, sometimes that took over the course, it should meet 10, 15 private meetings with parents, so yeah, we remain flexible.
Thank you very much, Dr. Clomp, you answered all my questions.
Excellent.
You want to have any questions?
I have a question.
Sure.
Has it always been, I know you said, since you've been here, that you were here when my office is here, but did the parents always have to do a prom promise for whatever?
We call it pre-prom decision-making, yeah, we put that, that's been around. There was something else prior to that, we renamed it a little bit.
What exactly do we start by, very hard to read?
I'm sorry?
Like, what are we saying to the parent that we're going to ensure?
Just like code F's thing.
So usually, the kid got up and spoke, and we asked him to sit together right on the screen. I don't know if you remember, I think you...
No, I honestly don't remember.
So it was towards the end of the year, just prior to the prom ticket sales, we did it. And the kid just basically says, I promised to call and be safe, and can provide it for you if you want. It's written down.
That's a member of...
So he wasn't present, now it's on video, to do it on video?
Now, we asked the kid this year to read it to their parent and upload that to the Google classroom. And so they answered a number of questions based on the EdPuzzle, based on the content covered, right? For example, the question about the social host law, right, can you receive a fine? Can you be sued, sued sibling in court, is it both, right? There were a couple misinformation questions like on that, right? So they did a multiple choice piece. And then at the end, they were uploading a video of themselves. We can do that via Google Forms, and it basically codifies it against the kid's name, and you can check off that the kid completed the assignment.
Yeah, actually, given that we used to do it in the evening where many people couldn't make it, it would be the makeups, the redos, the, so what happens is, everyone can do it at their leisure, they have access to the puzzle, they upload it, and then as soon as their attestation is it, they can purchase their tickets and they can do it at any time.
Yeah, there's a, there is a flexibility, thank you, Mr. Shrock. There's a flexibility, the class advisors kind of put up an open window, so it's not knocked down for them.
It's easier for parents to do it, but if you don't have a, if you never did this before, you may look at it like this is a job for me when it's my kid, but reality, it's made it easier. The parents are going to have to do that at any time.
And the kids know... And the kids know the ed puzzle technology because they use it in school.
Dr. Clomp, would there be an alternative for those parents that perhaps were uncomfortable with putting themselves?
So Ms. Louden and, and Ms. Sanchez, the class advisors, they didn't have, I, I shared with them that they could tell a parent that they didn't need to be there. But the students, honestly, we, we ask kids in regular course of classrooms to record and upload. Your Chromebook does that. It's not something that they do every day, but they, they know how to do it.
And, and something they've done previously?
Of course.
Oh, okay.
Thank you very much again. That's why you're my favorite.
Oh, thank you, thank you, Mr. Kirk.
So, um, next up is reopening plan. Glenn had shared with us, uh, reopening of our schools. Uh, is the specifics that we wanted to talk about tonight on, on this. Do you have anything to update us on?
I think what Dan was saying in that document may not be the most updated, but everything is back to typical at this point. And the elementary schools, as you know, um, we're transitioning back into the cafeterias. Book fairs are indoors, events are occurring. I give you guys the fifth grade committee events that are happening at elementary school. Everything, this document now, I haven't gone back in since things have grown, um, prior to. But I know that, um, in the email I saw from was that we wanted to make sure we were moving towards the more typical year. And if you heard from Dr. Clomp, and you would hear that from Ms. Lark or anyone, the events that are planned are typical. Celebrations are allowed, X, Y, and Z. The events are happening. So, um, at this point, our opening plan is we're open and we're running our events.
Does anyone have any specific concerns that they heard us and want to make sure?
So that's, that's fine, people hear that, that's great, you know, it was a great plan, it worked, thank you. You did a great job on that in, in this time.
I'll update the plan so that the language in the plan that's on the website reflects that, um, but that's where we're at.
So we're back to almost 99% of the screen. So we're all tied, tied, tied. Okay, thank you.
Good. Uh, next thing on here is Supremal, which is a new thing that we brought on board. Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I skipped that one. Class sizes is next. So is there questions on class sizes, guys?
Yeah, I had actually put that on there. Um, I believe I brought it up in the last meeting. For, um, for years before COVID, we had really, and again, that was one of the reasons that I ran for the board nine years ago, was to, um, equalize and lower class sizes throughout the district to clean the elementary schools. Um, because back then, there definitely was some inequity. And, and I would say over many years, we worked to get that to, to a certain number. Um, and I believe, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, we would, uh, grade one through five, the magic number would be 26 when we were planning. And if that number broke 26 and went to 27, we would create a new section. Um, and in looking at the updates that we get and the enrollment that we get, I, I realized, oh my gosh, this whole year, it's been at seven, uh, 27. And, um, I'm not sure if anybody else on the board had, had realized that, but by raising it to 27, I believe we had lost four elementary classes. Um, and I believe they may have been used to do the pre-CAD. Um, so my concern is, you know, here we are, hopefully on the other side of the pandemic. Um, certainly the, uh, loss of learning and the social emotional needs of our children are, are, uh, have increased. Um, and I'm really, really concerned that we are now basing this on 27. We, we, in, in my opinion, we're going backwards. We're raising class sizes higher to before the pandemic. Um, and, and my concern was that we need to be back where we were at least pre-pandemic. Not taking away, um, but at least getting to where we were. Um, and, and I believe you had sent information that in order to bring us back to where we were, we would need to add six sections in the elementary school. Um, I had asked, uh, at, at that time, how are we going to do this? And Frank, I believe that you had said, and I did want to ask you obviously during the budget because that, your presentation, but, um, you know, how, how are we going to get there? That is, that is a lot of sections, that's a lot of teachers. Um, and again, to reiterate, we can't move backwards. We need to be where we were pre-pandemic as far as the class sizes in the elementary schools.
So how will we add six classes, you're saying? Financially?
Right, I, I had asked last year, I mean, last meeting, and I believe it was, well, this is the number. And, and Evelyn, you had brought up the point that there are things that we haven't settled or concerns that have come up last minute. We have our budget set. Um, and we tried to, we did a fantastic job of having it as close to dollar to dollar amount of what we're putting forward. And my concern is, here we are, and again, I don't know if the rest of the board agree with me, I'm just one person, but to bring us back to pre-pandemic is adding six additional sections, which is teachers, and that's a cost.
So the only, um, option to do that that I'm aware of would be to, um, move money from reserves into the general fund budget to be able to hire those positions. And then we would also need to evaluate, um, art, phys ed, and music sections as well because you're adding six additional sections. So we would need to evaluate how many sections would be required for that. And then the next step would also be to speak to the principals to make sure they have the space to add those classrooms. So those would be the three things. But the, the major factor would be, it would be a cost of estimating somewhere around 800 to 1 million, 800,000 to 1 million dollars, dependent upon how much special area increase we would need to manage adding six classes. So adding six classes district-wide, you have phys ed twice a week. That adds 12 sections of phys ed. 12 sections of phys ed is a point four phys ed teacher because they teach five or six a day, six a day in elementary. So that's six and six is 12. Here, adding 12 sections of phys ed, that would be a point four phys ed teacher if we didn't have room in our current phys ed, which I believe we already have in PE and health, um, at point five, the way we stand. So it would be utilizing reserve funds to cover the costs of increasing the amount of staff or reducing the class size. In the document I gave you, with the pages that follow behind, um, on the left-hand side is, um, the class size at, um, you have to skip the kindergarten because that's 25. But on the next page, on the left-hand side with the class size of 27, you see the class sizes for the buildings. And then on the right-hand side, I did it with 26. And then you'll see where the increases, um, are.
I, I guess I just want to add that I'm disappointed that there was, I guess, a miscommunication or a lack of, of communication that those sizes were being increased and that we were losing sections.
So these are the class sizes here, 27, that knows the class size, two sections, three sections. Right, so like you said, you look at that particular first elementary school in first grade, it would be projected next year to be 26 or 27. It brings back four rollover kids, but if you went to 26, you would have 17 each. Then you would need to add two. Right, two went to three. And then you'll see on that same page, the third school down, um, doesn't change because of the numbers. So it's 19, 19, 19, they would say 19, 19, 19.
Yeah, I mean, it did, obviously it's a concern to grow on a new program, um, and, you know, as we said, we brought it on, it would be, you know, at, at times a cost to the district when you're using some. You know, again, you said you brought some teachers back at that time for the program.
There was six or seven teachers excess, do you recall? Six.
So what if we were at 26 this school year, they might come back anyway. So, so, I mean, again, that's, I guess that, that is the concerning part, you know, that, um, we did bring on a new program and, you know, during this time.
Well, these class sizes are based on these numbers now. I'm not sure what they were when we started the school year. So it doesn't necessarily mean that six of them would have come back to fill these spots because these spots might not have been at these numbers when the class is open.
I think when I had looked back at the board updates, there were four sections, um, that were reduced in grades one through five.
Right, as we, we had spoken about, um, a conversation occurring, correct Barbara, in May of last year, where we had a conversation about changing that to 27 based on not knowing who was going to return to full person, how many students were returning, the way the classes were breaking. Um, so there was a decision made at the May meeting of last year to make that 27. And then we used that to fill this current school year's and then projected next year's based on that.
Frank, you remember we, uh, got more, right, we got more money, right? The money that we expected. What was that bringing?
So it was, uh, just over 400,000, um, so they go like 447, perhaps, like, right, just over that.
So that's what we're expecting to get. We reduced the amount of reserves by that 432,000 dollars that we received in excess aid from the legislative budget.
Yeah, the, the first presentations had our use of reserves going up from last year. So when we, similar to last year, we did the same thing last year when, uh, when we got a little bump in the legislative budget, we, we used it to reduce the amount of our.
I mean, just the question would be, the question I would have would be, what would be the actual difference if we, we looked at this, right? So obviously, we have to do a little bit more work because there's special new areas and things like that, right?
Probably. If you went back to the old reserve number, right, that we originally proposed, you would look at an additional maybe 400 to 450,000 on top of that. So the original reserve number that we presented to you was based on the original stating. We reduced that by 434, 432,000, whatever that number is. So if you went back to that reserve number, you would probably need to add another 100,000 or so. But that would be based on special areas. What could we cover in-house with special areas that currently exist? And what would we need to add? And we would have to evaluate that. We're in the process now of doing special areas and locations and, um, FTDs in each building.
I'm going to, can I just, I'm going to assume that to, to make this happen, that it's about, you know, you sort of got back.
440,000.
It's probably about double of that, right?
Yes.
Give or take a couple of that.
It's about double.
Right.
But there will still be schools like, like, I'm looking at these lists and the, the amount of students in each grade is so different. But like Woods Road seems to be a very low amount of students, but there are schools that.
So like, for example, if you made it to 26, on the first grade page, which is the third page ed, the second school down is currently 26, 26. They would stay 26, 26. But the school above them, that's 26, 27, would become 17, 18 each. So you would have one school at two 26s and the other school would be 17, 18 each. So either way you look at it, if, if we're talking about equity, you're, you would be keeping two at 26 as your artificial cap because the board policy is actually, um, for grades K through two, I think is 30, um, in the board policy. So we had reduced that several years back, I think it was my second year here, um, when we spoke about the one to five. So if it was at 26, that second school in first grade would stay 26, 26. But the school, the top line would break and they would be a 17, 18 each. And that's where you would need an additional teaching because they currently would be 26 and 27, 27 would be over the cap.
On second grade?
Yep.
Where you have Woods Road at 27 and 27?
Yep.
What would happen if, you know, you can't really predict if some students are going to leave, but what would happen if you had new students come into the building?
So they would roll over to, so the, the practice has been that on the last day of regular school, we lock grades one through five. And then kindergarten gets locked on August 1st. So if you look at that particular line that you referenced, you gotta see in the middle, it says eight old rollovers not returning. Um, if class size were to go to 26, you could bring those eight rollovers back and the classes would be 20, 21, 21, if you reduced it to 26.
If we didn't do anything, I would say the one to 28 would.
If that person would roll to another school.
Another school.
Yeah. Do you have a similar issue, like if you look at the grade, you have Woods at 27, 27? And then you have like Rollman's 19, 19, 21? Um, and then you have Delmont 24, 24, 24. If you would have raked the Woods to 26, they'd be 18, 18, 18. And on fourth grade, MGB is, um, 25, 26. They have a, they are losing one in a rollover. If they would, if that person chose to go back, it's typically fourth grade. We would speak to the parent because if they'd been in that building, K1, 2, 3, you know, moving into four, you would, if, you know, MGB could be 26, 26, um, and you would have DeLuca be 19, 19, 19. So really what it comes down to is that the budget that we presented to you had class sizes at 27. If you wanted to, as the board consensus, tell me to move it to 26, it would cost about, um, it would cost about in teachers, about 600,000 dollars just for the elementary classroom teachers. And then we'd have to evaluate special areas. So I'm making a ballpark estimate of somewhere around 800,000 dollars. That money would need to come from the reserves as a part of an amended, right, correct Frank? It could be amended budget.
Just like we did. So we just did that, um, in the winter, um, when we had that incident, um, that we had fixed the boiler. So we had to do a modi, a modification to the budget to increase it. Um, so then you can do that anytime throughout the year. So if you had all of a sudden, you know, an unanticipated expense, um, you could modify the budget anytime to take care of that expense, um, because it's a weekend expense.
So we can do this budget now and let's do some research and come up with a plan maybe?
As long as you make the decision before the, you know, the last day of school, right? When we're about to lock, um, with our classes, you have the ability to amend the budget. Um, we can reevaluate what our current class numbers look like towards the end of the year. Do people move towards the end of the year? What do the numbers look like? These numbers are as, as current, I have to tell you, Barbara and I do this every two weeks and they have changed every two weeks. And some by a lot.
I just wanted a question as far as the special area teachers. Um, when we said that with the staff that we have, we can certainly accommodate the pre-CAD students with that. Was that because we were taking away four sections in the elementary school where we were able to take those specials from those four sections that we eliminated and then put them towards the pre-CAD?
No, so for example, like librarians, right? So there's a full-time librarian in every building. So librarian is always available to do specials because they can work 30 periods a week. So there is no elementary building that has 30 sections in their building. So librarians tend to do enrichment programs, lunch programs, reading groups or, um, book talks. They do a lot of the in-house kind of author study things. And in, in G B, you have the ability to do the U P K. The phys ed teacher who is assigned there, we were using some phys ed time to do health in fifth grade for some of the sections rotating on a 10-week basis. And there was enough F T E in there to allow that full-time phys ed teacher to pick up U P K classes. In music, we looked at our groupings for instrumental music and were able to modify our groupings in instrumental music to allow for some free time for music teachers to be able to do some music in U P K. So it didn't, it modified, we modified some of the current practices and instead of maybe having a group before, we made the groups A in instrumental music, which then made free up a period for somebody to do a general music class.
And how is art, is the art teacher involved as well?
They're, um, do, do students get art?
Yes, they have one period of P E and they have art and they call it arts and crafts, push it because she had more time in her schedule. She was, we were small in regards to total sessions.
So there may be women art. So there may be room in art, what I'm hearing, so that may not be an area that would need to be increased. We'd have to look at that. We have to look at PE, the librarian, we wouldn't have to change, that's not a change. It's really just art, music and PE. So it may be PE that would be, you know, the one where we may need to look at. Art, maybe there is some room in there. It would be dependent upon the course enrollment at the secondary level, what courses we're running. And the art comment, I have to speak to Dr. Kim, you are on that.
Just one other side question, and again, I don't have elementary students. The PE teachers teach health in fifth grade?
There was, is that still continuing, Mrs. Lawrence? At one time, the PE teachers were doing a ten-week unit of health, correct?
Yes.
And they currently don't do that anymore?
Not, not to my ability, I can't speak to anybody else who used his time for the UPK. They worked for about two, two years until it changed.
Is that across, is it possible, I don't know, Kim, if you know, are they doing ten weeks of health in the other fifth grade elementary buildings?
I don't want to miss any until you can tell you for sure the classroom and all, but we did have to, we needed to, during COVID. And I don't believe they came back. I'll have to check with the principal to see for sure, for sure. But I know definitely not in MGV, I believe definitely not in another building. So I believe that all the buildings are going to be, but I don't want to miss any, but I'm looking to have information.
I believe if I can recall that we changed it, I think we changed it across the board.
I think so too, but I can look at that information.
No, those are just the key to five. Is he already separated out? But I did not. Just, Matt's asking some good questions, I want you to understand the chart. On the chart on the summary page, when you look at Paulman, it says seventeen plus six. What that means is seventeen gen ed sections plus six to language. And the MGV twelve does not include the current four or projected six sections of UPK for that year. So that you could really make that twelve plus six if you wanted to have it in a similar format. And that's what, on the top, where it says eleven plus one, eleven plus one, those are the languages on the pluses. Any other questions?
So we're gonna see a new plan, some different ideas and take a look. All right, so the super vouch I skipped to, that's a new program that we're using. Emails will be going out to the board in the next couple of stages. It's a new program that we're using to help evaluate, you know, different processes. So we'll be going through that stage. I just wanted to let everybody know that the next date that we have, a two-day tour is May thirty-first. And like I said, the board education, we'll be showing up shortly, Matt will be seeing that. Board docs, which is something that we've been discussing for some time. There's a couple of switches in the way, but we finally got board docs updated. So that's going to help the district in many ways move about many of the updates and, you know, different people signing off on different things. The process should be a little bit smoother. It also gives board members and administration a better way to communicate and more of an on-time basis. And just an update is the district clerk and the deputy district clerk are about to finalize their training. They had eight hours of training, I believe they have one or a little bit more than one hour left. They're also organizing and scheduling trainings for all the secretaries amongst the district, our administrators, and of course, the board. All trainings are going to be held virtually and we should be finished with the trainings by sometime mid-June. Actually, it does have the training scheduled for years as well. So secretaries and directors by the end of May, board members on the seventh, and then administrators on the eighth. And we're hoping to have this thing, folks swing for, you know, July first kicking off the new year with, you know, it's pretty exciting for us. I know you guys aren't that excited about it, but we are, right?
Ooh.
And that's about it. So, you know, we will take a few questions from people and, you know, understand, again, that this isn't a meeting to go, you know, back and forth on concerns if you have some, but we're listening to them. We want you to come to the mic, you'll have five minutes to discuss it. And then, like I said, we have some upcoming business meetings coming into play that we'll be able to discuss some of these topics, so.
So my daughter came home today saying that there's a concert tomorrow in Barbara's middle school. Is it possible, because I don't think I got anything home? If I did, it fell into the abyss of her backpack. But can we maybe send out a robocall or something for those middle school students that may be participating? Well, I don't think anything goes with the backpack anymore.
So I can tell you about the auditorium.
So I was asking secretly, I didn't want to make a big deal, it wasn't happening.
No, so we are, yeah, so we're a hop, skip and a jump. So the auditorium is complete, it is built. The lights are in, the soundboard is there. And the only delay right now is the curtain, this stage curtain. And we are working with Bell Four to get a temporary curtain if our curtain doesn't come through this order. So it's been on order for a year. I'm quick, I'd be, it's insane. The answer is always it's being shipped, I asked for a tracking number, there's no tracking number because it hasn't left where it was yet. But everything now is in there and ready to be utilized. And it will be open probably for the high school concert, which I believe is. For first, we wanted to make, allow the high school to have the first opportunity in that space since it's in their building. We'll probably schedule something, we're gonna put something together, we just have to figure out the curtain thing. But I've been informed by Dr. Kim that the concert could go on without the curtain, that we still would want to use the space. It may look a little jumbled when we move groups on and off the stage. But I would prefer to use the beautiful new space that we have now that the lights are actually there. So we'll figure something out and I'll get the information to the board and the community as soon as we have that figured out. That's exciting.
Anyone?
Hi, Ellen Han Bell, they still live there, I think. Oh, okay. How much money came out of the general fund for UPK for next year?
For next year?
For next.
It's approximately eighteen thousand or so a class. If there's six classes, it's about fifty thousand dollars.
Okay, and everything else, it comes from that? Okay, so whatever teachers were excess, were lucky that UPK came and they had a job. They wouldn't be in other sections at this point. Okay, how many, you see, it's very hard for us to follow what you're saying with class size because we don't have the same background that you have. How many open seats are there in every grade? And is it possible to look at, if a child is in a class of twenty-six or twenty-seven, to possibly go into a school that's smaller? Because there's no magic number. I mean, twenty, I've had kids, my kids were in a small class size grant, there were twenty in K through two. It was great. I've had other of my kids that are in classes of thirty. There's no magic number. And twenty-seven is a lot, twenty-six is a lot. But half a million dollars or a million dollars is a lot that I don't know that this community can support. So is it possible to look at where the open seats are and offering children who are in classes of twenty-six or twenty-seven the opportunity to go with smaller class in another building? Because when you add sections, those classes are now so much smaller and there's still inequity. There's always inequity.
So where you run into problems with that ideology is that siblings. So for example, you may have an opening at a particular grade in a building that is maybe at twenty-six or twenty-seven and say, hey, listen, over at Woods Road, they have nineteen, twenty, twenty-two. Would you like to go over there? We have a bus from your area. And then all of a sudden, oh, well, there's a second grade sibling. Oh, there's not room at Woods for the second grade sibling. And then now you have an issue with having to evaluate. And I would prefer the board to decide regardless, there's always a cap, right? And twenty-six, twenty-seven, whatever that is, to make it an option is not something that is too gray of a way to do it. Because what if we, a parent decides to go to a different school? And then kids come to enroll, because we have kids who enroll late in the year. And now that becomes cap if somebody moved into that area, can't go to their own school because four kids from another school, we offered them an opportunity to go there. So there's a lot that goes into it. And the, even in a policy, caps are artificial because they are numbers in the research. The research states that fifteen and under is really where you make significant impact. But you also, the difficult part is kids need to have relationships with kids. So I don't disagree then, the smaller we are, the better relationships teachers have the ability to make with students in their class. So it's, it's a balancing act because not all classes are at twenty-seven. And some, like Mr. Myers said, some are very low. Right now, you have some of the sections at nineteen, nineteen and nineteen because they were one or two over that twenty-seven. That's gonna happen in all. And that would happen again if you go to twenty-six. You may have some at twenty-six, twenty-six, and then another building at nineteen, eighteen, twenty.
Do you know the only grade that has equity in class size is UPK? Because they're all housed in one building and they're divided equally. And we've looked at that over the years. And a Princeton plan, a modified Princeton plan doesn't really work in the district. There's no easy way to have equity in the grades. I just think that you have to be cognizant of the taxpayer as well as the education. Education is so important to me. I have three teachers that I raise. It's so important to me. But you have to be cognizant of both sides of it. And just taking money out of reserves to support teachers. You know, we have all these positions in the next three years that are aidable right now, that are not. And there's so much coming up that we don't have a pay for three or four years. We have to think about the future as well as next year right now.
I just wanted to know, if I heard right, for next year, the opening, the school will all be open for PTA in-school events and activities? Yeah, but how about outside organizations also?
We're open to all outside organizations right now. So if you have a need to use it, just go through the building use process, we can absolutely use it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Dr. Hannah Kelly Mitchell, Offing Street. I have a few questions. One, are PTA meetings allowed to have children at them?
Something with PTAs? I think that would be something that you would work with, with the principal and the PTA.
Well, I've gone on PTA, wasn't sure if the board had decided to allow children to come into the events. And so some of the PTAs were allowing them, some weren't. And so Delmont knew I was showing up and asking ask. So it's okay with the board and parents? Because we've been doing a half virtual, half in-person to try to accommodate everyone because not everyone's gonna be here that night.
I would suggest you went to the principal or if you had a question about PTA specifically, go to PTA house.
But the board doesn't have a problem with children coming to the, okay, perfect. The, I know, I know we're talking about the stagger, and I know it's been brought up because I've asked a question a few times at Ford name, so I know it has been brought up over the months. I know that during the pandemic, the youth center assisted with providing that extra before school, like covering those times. Will they be providing it again this year? It's, okay.
Yeah, there will be before care. And actually, Kim, maybe you want to speak to how they add to school care programs changing for next year?
Yeah, so I spoke with Donna Cannon, from Homeless Home, and they're going to move their aftercare program to the youth center and bring all the kids to the youth center except for MGV because of the, of the UPK. So MGV students will pre-K advise, they have MGV for most common at the school. And all other grades, one through six, will be at the youth center.
Okay, and then before care will just be, they have a staffing for those? I know the schools haven't been decided yet, so I just wanted to, well, sort of see.
Yeah, so you had the UPK, you would drop things, and you had a regular education student that would receive before care available for that grade.
Thank you.
Hi, Nicole, five twenty, Offing Street. I just wanted to clarify these parallels. You had said that there were rumors, just wanted to clarify, was it rumors about, I don't know exactly what you heard, about the prom? We know that there will be a prom, but the emails did go out due to the fights and things going on at the high school, that if it continued, there would be possible cancellation of the senior prom. So that's what was upsetting to myself and other parents who, they feel they don't want to come to meetings because nothing is ever done. But obviously, if you read social media, that is what's going on. So it's not just three complaints. The prom, promist thing was an issue, they always had a parent meeting. I was told because the auditorium isn't done. I did ask, why couldn't it be done, you know, somewhere else? I was not comfortable uploading, pledging something, obeying. I don't know if anybody read the pledge, but it was about obeying certain things. I will not text, I will not drink, I will not, all things that I parent my child. So yes, there's been meetings in the past, you would stand up if I recall. There's never a video that I can remember. So I did have a problem. I was told that's what was discussed between the principal and the advisors. End of story, period. So I didn't even have an option. I guess if maybe I would have signed a video or photo release, maybe you wouldn't know how to do it. So we ended up doing it because what was the alternative? Which is sad to me.
Well, the video photo release would be the publication.
Well, I don't know whether the video, it's just.
No, I'm just saying that release wouldn't have changed the responsibility because the law regarding video and photo release really speaks to the district not using your child or your image in our publications. So it's free, I think, and Dr. Klampf had said, there's many things that kids are required to either present their video or put into their classroom. So that, I just wanted to clarify that.
Right, but you're not pledging something on video. God forbid something happens, so that will never be used, is that correct?
Will be used?
God forbid something happens.
The use of it is so that we have an attestation that we can then sell the ticket, that each kid did the, took art in the Ed puzzle, went through the questions and then presented the video.
So why not just sign a permission slip with the pledge? Why, I don't understand.
Because I don't run the high school, Dr. Klampf and his advisors decided that a video would be what they were looking for. And as him, as the leader of the building, they felt that that was the appropriate thing to do and how they wanted to do it. So I support his decision because I didn't see it something so outlandish that a student would have to pledge to not do those things that could cause serious injury or harm or hurt others. It's a pledge that they do every year. The pledge, I believe, hasn't really changed much over the years. Being videoed, the intent of it is not to use it against anybody for any, if you, if you make a mistake and you violated one of those pledges, which kids do all the time, make mistakes, it's a mistake. It's not gonna be, well, you attested in this video, so now you get double the punishment because you said you wouldn't. The idea is that they chose this modality and maybe they'll rethink it in future years. I thought it was a great idea to give flexibility to parents to be able to do this at any time with your child. Get it done, you could do it right away. If you had to work at night, you couldn't make the prom meeting at night, it was a great option. Nobody was looking to cause any discourse or harm. It was really for convenience and an easy way to use great technology. We always talked about, some of the things we did during the pandemic were outstanding and some we want to never do again. This was one thing that I thought was a great way to check off something that we could do in an easy fashion for parents.
Again, it's just my opinion and I understand.
I understand your position and that you're in. I said, I understand your position and that you're in.
And I don't have concerns of my son doing any of those things. Like I told Dr. Klampf, I'm not gonna video myself. And he really had no choice, which again, we talk about SCL and stuff. He felt like this is like stupid, like I'm standing in my room, videoing myself about a pledge. And I understand for some parents, it is easier. It should have been an option, have a parent meeting, have it, you had top twenty-five here at the middle school. There could have been other options, but it's done and over with. But, you know, I don't like the way I was spoken to, end of story.
Now you have to really speak to.
I did, but I'm just kind of done with.
Oh, you spoke, correct.
You know, what's that? Yes, that's what I'm saying. It was really, I didn't have much say, it is what it is and that's it. But at my last few months here, I wanted to be enjoyable and it just seems very disappointing from now worrying about canceling a prom because of fights. You know what? Have no tolerance. Like the fights have been going on since September. You're not gonna cancel a prom and we're all gonna lose money because it's the same kids or whatever it is. I understand that's his building, you might not have too much say, I don't know. But to really put that on kids, to be like, oh, now we have to worry if something else happens because you know between now and. and prom, something's gonna happen. It's usually every day, every other day, fights going on, that they have to worry about, I might not have a senior prom. It's upsetting to them.
I think that you know was particular to prom proposals, which were these social media posts regarding hundreds of kids disrupting the educational flow of the building. And in an effort, we have been working very hard over the past several months on improving and ensuring the health and safety of the students in the building. And I think Dr. Kompit's message to the students and the, and the message wasn't, it's going to be canceled. It was, if this continues, it may be a possibility that we, we can't run the prom. Because if we go back to that video, we see a hundred kids that caused a disturbance and they get suspended, they can become ineligible. So what it was, was, hey, please speak to your, your kids because we want these things, these great things to happen.
Right.
And these could be the outcomes or the consequences if they continue to happen. And it doesn't mean that when, you know, I'm not giving carte blanche to say one more event and the, the prom is canceled. Or guess what? You get away with one more, we're thinking about two. The idea is that it was a message that was sent pervasively to the senior class and to the parents of the senior class. So that we can work together. There was no intent to cause discourse, alarm, to take anything away from anybody. Our goal from the beginning of the school year was to continue to rebuild back experiences for our kids. I know that you haven't been happy at the speed that we've been going and we've had several conversations at board meetings regarding that.
Right.
But we are moving at a speed that we're comfortable with and that we can get kids fully back, having and enjoying their entire rest of their senior year. Because there was a group of kids last year that didn't get that opportunity. And seven graduations in a particular year, seven ceremonies with fifty kids, like, we understand that. I have a high school senior.
Right.
I empathize with you about what our kids have been through and understanding what I'm trying to do here for this school district is try to provide as much opportunity as we can for our students to get back to the things that they enjoyed. So that's my goal. And if you wanna speak to me directly or people have concerns, they can speak to me directly because every time we've had a conversation on this stage with the Board of Education, it has been to release and open up our schools in a more pragmatic way that's safe, that continues to give students opportunities to grow, heal from this pandemic, embrace friendships and embrace the social aspect of school that is so important.
Right, and that's what my point was, like last year, lost junior prom. So everything, I thought this year would be, and just to get that was upsetting. The other thing that was upsetting, college commitment day, usually Mr. Kompit, or Dr. Kompit, you know, you have them take pictures with their shirt. Now it's every Monday in May, but again, nothing.
So I see it every week on Twitter, on the feed and on the, and pictures are taken and there, I see kids each week, that pictures and staff are wearing their shirts on Mondays. So actually, I think he expanded it, instead of being one day, which it used to be in the past, because I used to get the email, hey, come here this Monday, wear one of your kids or your own college shirt. And it was a one-day thing. He tried to extend that experience so that kids who were making late choices could get apparel and wear because the first fell on a Sunday, so it was an awkward, May second, was it a Monday, I believe, if I recall?
Yes.
And then extended through the month so that kids would have on every Monday the chance to share and the staff could share.
I don't know where, there's a commitment page on Instagram where kids uploading or something, but no, maybe four to six pictures on what you're talking about.
So on the Twitter feed that I follow, I've seen dozens of pictures of this.
I'm not on, it's on Facebook.
And it's on Facebook?
Yeah, they just seem what, I don't know.
So there was, the sports have been on there? Do you wanna speak to that?
Yeah, I just wanted to answer a couple of things. The, the proposal issue did not result in a fight. I just wanna, just wanna clarify, the board, this call said it was two fights, there were two proposals that we had hundreds of kids gather for prior to them occurring and some kids, and I would say hundreds, I put in my letter, it was a hundred, but somewhere between two and four hundred kids. And they were basically like mush. And I put in the letter, it was not a spontaneous event. Some students invited, a dozen or more friends to hand out flowers in one case. And I also just wanna point out that for years, we've encouraged this to normalize the open prom meeting. And we've had many proposals that we knew about in advance, that we worked with kids and we're seeing. So the W is not a great spot for four hundred kids to randomly gather and then create a pushing and a bad placing away there. And that's what, that's what happened. We have five kids sent to the nurse. And so I need to put that into a little bit of perspective that there's safety. The second thing you mentioned is the college acceptance celebrations. This is what colleagues have raised off for less than four or five years. Regarding that, we recently updated our website, the brochure. We trained, we trained all of our staff and kind of uploaded pictures. And rather than just kind of one drunken research that puts it out, a lot of kids have a pick which school they go to in the past year. We were trying to screen that out over the forward long. And in the W, I had a parent, got a message today, actually, his parent wanted to know and it was up actually today, the balloons twenty-two, the step.
Right, I just.
All that stuff, all that stuff is up because we are trying to go along with the celebration. Research, I mentioned, we try to promote college, college every week. Our staff wears departmental shirt Monday, college shirt another. Joining the kids, of course, there is very, a crime report in our town. This month, we're trying to stretch it out over a month. Rather than just put it on, on a one day, it's a good fall, Sunday, it's like, oh, we do, and we're also a little, any keys, making it a little bit more, more challenging. So those were some of the decisions we tried this year. It's a little bit different, we're setting up the W for that purpose over the course of month and hopefully the patients will just keep coming up.
And the other thing, the senior sports, I hear that it's June fifth. Do you know when we'll be notified? Because that's just rumor and it's May ten?
Well, let me just look at the district calendar, hold on one second.
Sports, sports awards are on Sunday at, like we did last year.
High school senior athletic award ceremony is on district calendar for June fifth at ten AM.
So we're supposed to just look at the calendar or are we notified? I don't have a lot.
I'm sure some notification will go out. I don't know whether it comes from the high school or the athletic department, but they're doing it similar to last year on the field, as a celebration on the field, on the athletic field, similar to last year. And I believe that's a, a Sunday.
On a Sunday, right. And then, sorry I'm taking up your time, but what are the guidelines for, I think Jason had come to about the student for graduation? Jason, obviously, you know, he committed suicide that he wanted to remember and he thought like a moment of silence at graduation. I think that Dr. Kompit told him, we'll just like kinda say a generalization to remember?
So, so I, I got what you said today is that you would be a law guy. Do you follow, do you follow guidelines from, from national organizations for care? Is crisis prevention, is it, is it down there?
Care, I don't know what the.
Care is a lack of crisis prevention and intervention and suicides are particularly true. I actually, Jason said, you know, there's been a lot of loss, including, including one of its, one of its hospices twelve years ago.
Yes.
That was a suicide. And I actually had a really thoughtful conversation. We recently lost one of our teachers. And I have been, I have been taking them all into recovers because we had insurance on a loss or COVID, but I thought it was random. So this will be more shared, shared, I don't know if it's the right format, but we are gonna show that.
I just thought it should be recognized and especially the classmates and Jason felt.
Just be aware of not being the names, not being the names.
Right, okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
First, thank you for acknowledging that there were some concerns regarding the elementary school time change and looking into potential alternate solutions as a parliament parent. I very much appreciate that. With that being said, I just wanna make sure I understand, the, the reason for this potential change is to save money? Is that accurate?
Is to, not to save money because the money's not there to save. It was the plan on busing that our fleet can handle in-house.
Okay. So what is gonna be different about next year as opposed to this year? Because as far as I know, all the start times this year for the elementaries are the same. So what is gonna be happening next year that warrants this change?
We're trying to reduce the number of buses that we're using in contracted services because of the expense of those.
Okay, but I noticed that the, the difference in transportation contract budget line is an increase of one point six million from last year to this year.
Because there was a new contract that was negotiated and it went up by, what was the percentage?
Yeah, so it's, it's almost a hundred percent, a hundred percent increase in the contract.
So these.
We're trying to reduce the number of buses we're using to try to keep that two million dollar increase at that number and not lower.
So the one point, I'll make sure I got this.
One point six.
The one point six million increase in contracted transportation is to cover the costs that we currently have now? It's to roll over?
No, the one point six is how much more we would need to spend with a staggered start. If we didn't use a staggered start, that one point six would be more. So we built the budget knowing that if we staggered our elementary schools, our bus drivers could do more runs and we would need less contractual services. So the services went up by one point six million. They would have went up, would have gone up more if we didn't start, stagger the start of the elementary schools.
Yeah, it'd be about two, it probably would have went up about two point one. So it's about a half a million dollars that we are saving because of the staggered times. So we, we don't have to contract out as many routes.
So how many routes are contracted out now? Because I think you may explain this like I'm a toddler.
I don't know that number, that number off the top of my head.
How many contracted routes, how many routes are you looking to contract out next year? What would be the increase in the number of contracted routes go, if we were to move forward with this staggered start?
It's not gonna increase if we move forward.
So it'd be the same number of contracted routes?
Roughly, yeah.
At a higher rate?
It, it changes throughout the year because the contracted routes, it's a combination, it's primarily, we do like private schools, we do some sports, like this year we had to do, or also had to supplement some gen ed route. So that's, it's not, never gonna be like, it fluctuates certain years. One month it might be forty, the next month it might be forty-four. So I can't give you like one exact number, but for the, for our basic, like our normal reoccurring gen ed, regular routes, by staggering the start times, it saves us five routes, which is about a half a million dollars because we're able to utilize the drivers that we have, like, and then our, if we have all those schools going at the same time, it's a bottleneck right at that elementary time. So when you break that and you have different sections, now you, your bottleneck is no longer the elementary school, then it's currently the middle school. So, but we can't do any, you know, we can't start the middle school at different times. So that's, that's the rationale for doing it. That's why a lot, a lot of districts do it. And like I said, it would save about a half a million dollars. The reason why you're seeing such a big increase, but we're saying we're doing it to reduce the costs is because like I'm saying, last year when we set the budget, we didn't have the contract in place. So the contract was, was signed over the summer, which if you're gonna look at our actual results this year, you'll see the transportation costs are, are much higher than anticipated. So that's why it's still going up, but it, it looks like a big increase. If you were to look at what we're actually spending this year to what we're planning for next year, it's not as big of an increase. It's not gonna be one point six million increase from spending this year to budget next year. It's just the one point six for what we budgeted this year to what we're gonna spend next year.
So.
So do you understand that?
I, I'm not even sure.
All right, so basically what he's saying is that when we estimated our budget, right, we had the old contract, the con, the old contractual number. That number came in during the summer with the new contract significantly higher. We estimated a twenty percent increase in that cost, it came in higher than that. So what you're gonna see is that we probably spent just as much money this year that we're expecting to spend next year. We had to move money out of other codes to pay for our contracted buses because it wasn't budgeted with that drastic of an increase. So you see it being budgeted correctly this year.
Okay, that, thank you.
You're welcome.
So if we went without a staggered start, you're estimating it, these are all estimations. So that would bring the transportation budget to two point one million?
It would increase that. It would increase it by to two point one million, correct?
So.
It would add five hundred thousand dollars that we would have to come up with.
Right, no, I understand that. I, is that an option?
It wasn't in our option that we presented to the board because that would require five hundred thousand additional money from reserve to be pulled out of reserves in order to cover that cost.
Can I ask a question? Don't, are we, I mean, are we not also having an issue with the tenth hour of bus drivers? I thought that was one of those issues.
Yeah, so we, we do have a reduction in driving people and, and I think Frank provided that chart, you know, we went from probably a hundred bus drivers ten years ago to forty-two, forty-three, forty-four, somewhere in there now, and that we have expected three more retiring for next year.
So even if we, let's just say that, that we change around, we may not even have bus drivers to provide that service.
We may need to use contracted services more than we're planning on if our fleet gets reduced from the current position we're in now.
So that was kind of my follow-up, is this a?
Yes, yes. Because you would cover the five routes and save three people left, you may have to have to rent it out.
So is it a number of buses that we have in our fleet issue? Or is it a number of drivers we have to drive those buses? So what you're basically saying is that we're gonna have buses sitting in our bus yard while we're hiring out other companies?
Yes.
Just, I mean, how is our drivers number now? Because I'm on OLOS all the time and I don't see, I don't see any postings for bus drivers on OLOS.
Bus drivers, I was almost on.
Where would they be posted?
They go on OLOS, they go on our website, they go on Facebook, they go to.
Twitter. OLOS isn't really a system that we use for bus drivers.
That's why, I've seen, I've seen other districts there, so I wasn't sure that they could go to.
Twitter, website, newspapers, we advertise with local papers, like Beacon and other papers such as that for bus drivers.
So in theory, if we had a surge of drivers apply and become employed, then a staggered start would be a non-issue?
We would have to find enough people for five additional routes or whatever, because I'm gonna make this up, it's somewhere in the forties. We have forty-five drivers now. If we had fifty and five routes didn't need to be, we could redo, we could keep the one point six million dollar increase, we would maybe be able to figure out with the number of drivers we have on hand, how to run the current system.
So we would need to add five drivers to the current, okay, listen.
Yeah.
And you said how many are retiring?
So I believe at this point, Dee, you and I spoke that there's an estimated three people at the end of the year that.
There is one moving and I believe there is one retiring.
And one retiring in October, I believe.
And one is retiring in October, yes, I'm retiring.
Okay, so that would be three plus our imaginary potential five.
Which would be eight.
Correct. Good, easy man.
I, I wanted you to say, treat me like a toddler, so I gave you eight.
Can I ask what our pay is for drivers in comparison to surrounding districts?
I don't have that chart in front of me, but.
I don't believe we're as competitive as surrounding districts and the board has discussed where then to go back and try to negotiate a higher salary. I don't know where that is in negotiations.
So I sent a recent email to the board?
Well, yes.
Yes, so, right, it's really not, not really something we're able to discuss in public.
I understand, contract negotiations are fun, I understand.
And I have been meeting with the shop steward who's sitting there. And we, we probably had since that board meeting, several, two, three meetings where we had opportunities to brainstorm ideas on how to increase the fleet, incentivize, get more people here, get the people to stay here. So we've been working on that. So we are trying to do exactly what you're saying. Trying to make it more beneficial to come here, to hire those drivers.
Because in the long run, and again, I'm not, I'm not a financial person, but isn't it financially in our best interest to use our school buses than it is to contract out? So then, from a fiscal perspective, giving more competitive pay to our drivers seems like a long-term win-win for everyone.
I just wanted to tell you about this scenario that we spoke about, you might not have been here for this meeting. So if we are able to incentivize or increase the pay, the amount that we increase the pay would have to equal the amount that we're able to reduce, like you said, the eight or the five, the contractual rate. So I'm gonna give you an example. Say our bus drivers currently make twenty dollars an hour, it's not an accurate number just so you know. And we change it to thirty so that we are competitive. All the bus drivers then get thirty dollars an hour and we create a new schedule. But guess what? There's nobody else who's interested in working in those specific. There's nobody else who's interested in working in those positions because right now, filling certain positions within the economy is very difficult. We now increased everybody's pay by ten dollars an hour in our bus unit. And did it offset the contract? So we're still paying the one point six million more because we didn't get any more buses than the forty that we have here, forty drivers. But the forty drivers are now making ten dollars more an hour.
Right.
So we now are paying them an extra two hundred thousand dollars a year and never changed that contractual number.
Well, could you present it the way that a lot of districts offer and send them to retirement?
I have.
If we can have ten people retire, then we're going to offer this package.
We have.
If we can get ten more people employed, everyone gets a ten dollar raise.
So I'm not going to disclose our negotiation details, but I have to say that we have an ideology that we have been working with. And we're currently working with the bus driver unit and their, um, team service representatives.
And I'm going to see most of our drivers live in our community or a significant number?
Not that I know of.
No? I'm just curious.
No, I want to.
A lot do live in there. So again, another, another benefit to competitive salaries, we keep people from our community driving our kids around. You know, there's your, there are your stakeholders.
Take this as a help wanted.
I, I'll do what I can do now.
I can train you.
I, I, I have a job, but give me nine years when I retire and I might take you up on it.
Dee, do you know how many?
Thank you.
I'm sorry?
Do you know how many or if any?
Applicants? No, not that I'm aware of. Uh, we have, I'm sorry, we have, we do have a couple of new hires, I shouldn't say that. We have one that came and left, uh, had it for a better opportunity and one that since has, has been hired. So we have one, we drive, we lost one and gained one, so it's like a wash.
Thank you. How are you, sir?
How are you? Um, my name is Jason Dennis, I live in fifty-six Kyne Avenue. My, uh, fourth grade son goes to Parliament. I'm trying to understand the bus situation, I know it's just explained, so. I apologize for my ignorance on the subject. Um, but I didn't understand, or it wasn't, I think, provided how the staggered start is solved on a yearly basis. So right now, we're doing the staggered start to accommodate the X amount of families for the pre-K that are starting this year, the universal pre-K, but at the same time, using it to save money. Because the contract went up much higher than previously anticipated. Am I somewhere in the ballpark with that?
You're in the ballpark in that we don't have the amount of drivers that we wish we had as a decision was just saying.
Right.
How many runs we can do ourselves?
So, so to accommodate that, that's what we're doing in staggered start. So we're, we're doing it so that the universal pre-K and, and again, my ignorance on the subject. How many universal pre-K families are there in, in the district, um, starting this year?
It should be a hundred and seventeen.
Hundred and seventeen.
And also it has to do with contractual work base, the hours that somebody works.
You're talking about the staff of the individual?
The staff of the building. And fitting the UPK into the building that doesn't extend the hours so that teachers don't work longer than their contracted hours.
Right, so you're, so you're talking about Woods Belmont and MGV.
Woods Belmont.
Going up twenty-five, uh, going in later twenty-five minutes. And the other two.
The MGV, Woods and Belmont being earlier, they would have an eight fifty-five start time. This is what is, and Parliament and DeLuca being nine twenty-five start time.
Nine twenty-five.
Yeah, it's a twenty-five minute difference than, difference than the current start time of this year. And the other school would be going earlier to create the separation so that the bus drivers could do a run and then get to do another school. So like the essential part of that Parliament place and DeLuca need to be together. Where they land in other scenarios, as I said, that this is, um, was only in conversational mode at this point. And I don't know who released it to the public as a done deal because it was planned for a conversation with the Board of Education. Um, I met with the elementary principals and told them that this was our current recommended change for the start times. This is the first conversation that the board has had regarding these recommended start times. So I don't know where the, um, the, um, what's the word for it? Like where the, um, where it is definite at this point, I don't know where that came from. I don't even know how the information really got out, other than me sharing it with the board and with the principals. I haven't had any conversation with anybody else. And I, and I told the principals when I met with them that this was recommended information and they needed to wait until I had a conversation with the board to determine what the final determination would be. And that's the last meeting I have regarding this. So I don't know how this all went out to the community in a way that this was set in stone and a done deal.
But the way you proposed it is that the, DeLuca and Parliament would be the later two.
That's the way I am proposing.
Which was the same last year when we did the staggered starting based off of the.
Yes.
Safety protocols for the students within the buses.
Yes.
Am I correct?
Correct.
My only question, and I know you're saying it's not a done deal, but the families from DeLuca and from Parliament have already taken upon themselves to adjust to a later time, which for most families, um, is hard because most families, at least the working parents, I, I, I start my job at five. So me personally, I'm not adversely affected, but my wife and, and the people that helped my wife get my kids to school are adversely affected. They were last year, um, not just time-wise, but obviously monetarily speaking, because we have to make the ends meet to get our kids to school and so forth when we can't do it within the timeframe that we were originally allotted, um, due to COVID and now because of the buses. So now you're asking us to do it again to accommodate the contractual situation going on with the bus situation, with the current fleet that we have that is under management at the moment. And that we're contracting, contracting out to bus companies to alleviate that situation currently. I know it's not edge new stone at the moment, but asking us, and I, I believe we're the two biggest schools.
Yes.
Asking X amount of families to put it on their shoulders again, to go in later, to make accommodations for their students to come in, to accommodate a hundred and seventeen families. And that number may not be completely accurate because there may be people from Parliament and also from DeLuca that have those kids in those pre-K.
Definitely.
But overall speaking, that you're still talking about the two biggest schools in our district, elementary-wise, that now have to take it on yet again to make accommodations monetarily and time-wise to get their kids to school. I know for me, I can't speak for anybody else in, in either school, but myself, I have a, uh, a three-year-old that I, I have to get to school at nine thirty for, um, for his pre-K. But he's a three-year-old, so he doesn't finish the pre-K program at, at our district, uh, at nine thirty. And now I have to also get my four-year-old, um, my fourth grade son, at the same time to Parliament. And I have to do it at the exact same moment and find people to help me make this accommodating. Meanwhile, my wife and I have to be at work at an earlier time. So either my wife has to just money by going later to work. It's no one's concern and we understand that. And no one has a problem making accommodations. My issue is that you're asking the two biggest schools yet again to make the accommodations, to make it work for the district. Meanwhile, the families with, that, I, I don't know, they equal out the same amount of, of, uh, number of students with Bel, uh, with Woods, Belmont and MGV, if they equal out to the same?
The three schools are significantly more students added together.
If they wouldn't be able to go out later. And I, again, I know it's a fluid conversation, same thing as with fluid conversation about the contracts. Um, but asking the same family to do that two years in a row is difficult. Is it impossible? For some, probably not, but it's difficult. So if you could just take that into consideration, in your deliberations, it would be greatly appreciated.
Thank you. Anyone else like to comment on that?
Can I say one last thing?
I just want, one second. I just wanted to mention that, and the vote is coming up on Tuesday, um, what time? Seven. Thank you. So seven AM to nine PM, um, and it's a trusty vote as well as a budget.
I'm sorry, I have one more, so I'm Chris Dennis, I live at fifty-six Kyne. If this does happen and they do change the schools, that Parliament and DeLuca have to go in earlier, when would we be notified? Because when we did it with COVID, we were told just a couple of weeks before the school started. And, um, you know, our jobs, we have jobs that we have to notify.
By the May seventeenth meeting, I'm going to get the board all the information they need.
Okay.
So that was the idea of starting this conversation early. And we have been speaking about it since February, when we just started the board, uh, conversation on the budget. Although nothing has really, like I said, ever been set in stone. So I'm going to ask the board if we can come to a consensus at the May seventeenth meeting. We'll put it back on the agenda to have a discussion and we'll have the information that we can let all the parents know what the decision is regarding start times.
Okay, right, and my last question was, when we did it with COVID, my son's a walker, so I, I know some parents, kids, you know, the kids that go on buses are going to go home later and come into school later. My son's a walker. We had to drop off at nine twenty-five for walkers. So is, you're saying nine twenty-five is the start time? So walkers would go in at like nine fifteen or it'd be, or is nine twenty-five, what's the, is that the start time?
Nine twenty-five is the start time.
The start time, so walkers could get dropped off earlier. Do you know what the end time would be?
Yeah, um, so that's three forty-five, right? Three forty-five.
Three forty-five, okay.
Okay.
I need a motion to adjourn. Second.